Start the transcript.
Okay, we're good. I make a motion, I make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Okay, trustee Stutzer.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes. This should be quick.
Yeah. Okay, so does any board member have a disclosure regarding any relevant information or contact pertaining to any of the items on the agenda?
Trustee Lanfair, I do if we are going to be voting on the CIPP. I saw that it was added to the agenda, so I'm just asking, okay?
Okay, thank you for that.
I do not.
Okay, I did meet with John Steinmetz, who's going to be discussing the third, the item about grant writing and funding opportunities. He'll be, I think, phoning in tonight. You know, just to share some information about that. Does any board member have any conflict of interest regarding any of the items on the agenda that is having a financial interest in the outcome of a vote on an item before you? Oh?
I just exploded about CIPP. Do I need to do that a second time?
No, you're good, you're good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, because if there was a conflict, then you were accused and you did that, so thank you for that.
And I do not.
And I do not. Okay, with that being said, I'd like the clerk, please, to read the open meeting compliance certification. Novel.
Novel, deep breath. I will record this at some point. Okay, the public will have opportunities to comment on specific agenda items when they occur in the meeting and also in general matters at the end of the meeting. Speakers can comment once in each comment window if it is on a specific agenda item. It is not a debate, a deposition, or a panel discussion. Speakers must, well, okay, we're skipping that one tonight. If an attendee is participating via web conference technology such as Zoom, the clerk will announce how attendees should signal that they wish to comment. This may differ by a platform, but is typically accomplished through the raise the hand feature, which is the platform we have tonight. So if you have a question you want to ask the board directly, please raise your hand. If it's a question you would like me to ask the board, put it in the Q and A. I will say I don't check chat, so if you put comments in chat, I will not be looking, okay? Speakers must give their name, address, and organization. There shall be an exemption for any category of people protected by New York state law. Speakers Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officers. Speakers must limit their remarks to three minutes on any given topic. Speakers may not yield any remaining time they have to another speaker. Board members may, with the permission of the mayor, only interrupt a speaker during their remarks for the purpose of clarification or information. Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Interested parties or the representatives may address the board by written communications to village clerk@villageofpittsburgh.com. All written communications will become part of the public record and will be attached to the minutes at the meeting for that meeting. At center's request, written communications will be read aloud by the clerk at the meeting when we'll adhere to the three-minute time limit. If printing materials or other media are provided by attendees during the meeting, they must be submitted to the village board with optional distribution to audience members. All materials will be part of the public record. Private distribution of materials to audience members only is prohibited.
Thank you.
And we have a hand raised, and I'm not quite sure why. I'm gonna...
Is there a question or something?
Nothing came in the Q and A, and I'm not sure. We really haven't started anything, so.
Okay, so with that being said, we have the building inspector's report. Does anybody have any questions for Steve? Oh, Steve on?
Steve is not on.
Oh, he was going to be on. I do know that.
I'm...
Okay.
Now we got two hands raised. What is going on? Okay. I do not have Steve, so.
Okay. They're all right. Are there questions? Are they?
I'm not sure. I'm gonna send a message to the gentleman person and ask what's going on.
Okay. All right, the DPW report. Zach, good evening.
Hi, everybody.
Any questions for Zach? Yes, Lily?
Thank you. I didn't know whether to put this under member items, but I, since Zach is here now, I will do it at this time. That is, and Zach can clarify, I had a conversation with a village resident who had expressed an interest in having a fruit tree, specifically a Stella, I love that name, self-pollinating cherry tree, placed on her, right away in front of her property. And at first, it did not appear that that was something within our scope to do, but since talking with Zachary about it, he agreed that we, as a village, could certainly provide the tree for this resident. And so I wanted to talk to the board and bring them up to speed regarding the addition of a street tree that is not in our typical street tree inventory, but has been specifically requested by this, by this resident. Did I say that correctly, Zach?
You got it right.
Okay.
Oh, hi, Steve. Yeah, hey, I have Stella cherries. I think they're great. I also have Teutarians. So, you know, I mean, I, I mean, it's, is it under utility lines?
Uh, yes, so there are utility lines, but...
They don't get to be too large.
Yeah, I think they max out around 20, 25 feet, so there may be some trimming, but that's gonna be years down the road, and it shouldn't be comparable to like a maple or oak or something like that.
Plus you get cherries.
Yeah, and they can be trimmed, they can be kept small through selective pruning as well, and still fruit, so yeah, it's honestly a pretty decent choice for the area.
Yeah, yes, Renee?
I actually was gonna talk about trees under my member items as well.
Well, we're all in on trees now.
Yes, so we talked about, if it wasn't our, I think it was our last regular meeting, about getting the list together of the locations of where we would be planting the trees, and I guess that that usually happens in the fall, is that correct, when you guys plant, or when is it?
We plant most seasons outside of summer. Summer is difficult because the heat is pretty bad for the trees, especially when they're freshly planted, so we try to do it throughout the fall and sometimes winter and through the early spring.
Yeah, the heat is really a stressor on a young tree, yeah.
Right, so we have, do we have a map of the locations, I mean, where we lost a lot of street trees this year. We talked about putting something that wouldn't be quite as large, but would still provide the protection from, you know, as a traffic calming mechanism, and also protection for when drivers do decide to leave the street and come up on the curb, which they do periodically. So when, when will we know where we're gonna be planting?
You have a map already, Zach, is that correct? It just, it needs some updating. I know you've shared that.
Yes, we still have to update the map. We do have an interactive map that the town put together for us, though.
Right.
Of the trees.
For locations of where we will be planting new ones. We just need to update that, okay?
We need to update that still, which years prior, it has been the mayor has kind of added that one, so I'm not sure if you guys are gonna rely on me for it or what.
Let's all work together, yeah.
Okay.
Let's all work together and do that. And, you know, right now, too, they, they just, the whole DPW crew is sort of all hands on deck with chip ceiling. You know, it was supposed to be two weeks out, the opportunity came up right now. So I think, you know, everybody's kind of focused a little bit more on that, because this is really our season to do that.
Yeah.
Did I leave anything out on that, Zach?
No, the last month and a half, since the weather broke, really, we've been pushing to get Lincoln and Washington ready to go for chip ceiling. And the original date that we were looking for to have it done was the end of June into July. But it was pushed forward a couple weeks, so it was kind of a surprise to us last week, so we've been crunching to get everything ready to go for tomorrow morning. So most other things have been put on the back burner until, until this is done, because this is kind of a big project for the year. It's our only roadwork project, and everything will hopefully fall into place after that.
Through me, thank you. We're getting a lot of questions about trees, so I know this is not tree planting time. I just wanted to make sure we're keeping, keeping track of that and replacing where we can.
Yeah, no, we've got to get back on track with that. I'm still having trees trimmed up, and I've got a list of trees that are coming down. And I'm maintaining the list, the map itself has not been updated yet, but it will be as soon as possible. And then we just have to coordinate what trees are gonna be going where after that.
Yeah, through me, okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, and Jeff is still working, you know, on the tree ordinance, you know, for us to be a tree city. So there's, you know, other moving parts for that, too, in addition to the tree map. So, great, okay, anything else for Zach? Yeah, Renee?
I do, Zach and I talked, or chatted the email, or I can't remember who, maybe I'm getting all my conversations confused, but Peter Budd wrote in with some requests, some of the signage on Shane Place, given the heavy traffic is kind of in way on the sidewalk. I don't know why I never, I mean, I just sort of assumed that always had to stay there. I feel like it's really annoying. I didn't even know we could move it, so it sounds like that's gonna be moved. And then you're, some, he had some concern about freshening up the paint there on the crosswalks. Sorry about the phone in the background. And so I'm gonna follow up with him. I think you emailed me back, and I'll just, I talked to the mayor today, and I'll, I'll follow up with Peter Budd.
Thank you.
I think he sent that talk to all of the trustees, so I just wanted to make everyone aware.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Shane Place is gonna be a difficult one for us this, this season.
Because of the bridge closure?
Yeah, the weight limit sign we put there for obvious reasons, but last year, when the State Street Bridge was taken out, and that was being used as a bypass, to try to keep, you know, the bigger trucks from going through there, not that it really did anything. We don't have a whole lot of real estate in areas to put signage, so there was, you know, if we're gonna put it back out there, we gotta get creative and start stacking signs on top of signs and very tall posts. But for now, we're gonna pull it out. That way, it's not in harm's way of anybody trying to, you know, cut through the sidewalk on a bike or even walking through there, you know, when it's two or three people wide, it's a little crazy, so. All the, the painting, striping, and stuff like that is, that's gonna be difficult as well. There's never a quiet time. And I'm trying to come up with a good plan for that, and it's not gonna, but we'll, we'll...
Yeah, I mean, can we wait until, would it be too late on your schedule if we waited until after the bridge opens back up to do all that?
But we're gonna miss the whole summer of people, you know.
Yeah, okay.
In place. For now, there's, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done on Shane Place as well, a lot of patching, which you don't want to do before you paint, because then you have to go back through with the paint and stripe anything that was patched over. There are a couple catch basins that have to be repaired, so we've got a road plate sitting over one of them right now. And that's gonna be semi-permanent until we can get in there, and it's right at the bend in front of Level Seven. It's a bad spot, so.
Yeah, it's noisy.
Yeah, and I don't know, it might be after the bridge opens back up, unfortunately. Not unless we can find a quiet time to get in there and do some work, but.
I don't know if you're gonna find a quiet time.
Yeah, but the striping, it sounds like some of the crossings, you're gonna try to get some of the thing, the paint done.
Gonna try, so as, as we do that, we shut down a whole lane of traffic.
That'll be very popular.
Yeah, so, you know.
Technically, people aren't supposed to be using that as a detour, but we know they do. So, you know, anyway.
Yeah, so we're kind of in a bad place with Shane Place.
Well, just while we're talking about the traffic on Shane Place, I was gonna use it as a member item, but probably just with everybody on now, just, I met with Bill Smith today, and we have been really strongly negotiating with NICE Dot to get a stoplight at the end of Shane by the State Street Bridge. Was not a lot of success, so Bill and I are joining forces. Zach, maybe we can do what we did last year, you know, where we all meet out there and they see how crazy it is.
Mayor Plummer, you just mean temporarily, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we did for the...
Okay, because we have asked them repeatedly for a permanent length there, which won't happen, but you were just talking about...
We're just saying, can you at least do this?
Okay.
Yeah, can we at least get this, you know? So, yeah, because I've had a lot of, you know, response. I'm sure other trustees have too, from people being very frustrated trying to move out of Shane Place. So, yeah, anything else, Zach?
Um, no, I've pretty much covered everything in my report. Yeah, so tomorrow morning, we are gonna be starting the chip ceiling, and that's gonna go mid-morning-ish. Anticipated to take around three hours or so, start to finish. There will be loose stone on that road for about a week before we go in there and sweep it. That's just to give time for the stone to set up on the road. Then next week, we will go and start sweeping it, and we'll carry on until the road is fairly clean. And then we're gonna be helping the town out with sweeping some of the roads that they are chip sealing as part of our shared service agreement. So they've got four or five miles, I think, so.
Yeah, they just did sunset, so that's the same thing that's gonna happen on Washington and Lincoln and whatever else is in your report, okay?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, anything else for Zach? We're good? Oh, yep, Dorothea, yes.
We do have a public comment.
Okay.
Ms. Caraberas, you're ready, you're able to speak.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Question about the...
Can you state your name and address, please?
I'm sorry, Margaret Caraberas, 81 South Main Street. I have a question about the work that the DOT is planning to do on the corner of Jefferson and South Main Street. Zach, can you enlighten us as to what is gonna be happening there? It looks like they're gonna round out that corner in front of John Woodman's house.
John Woodman's house is the northwest corner?
Correct.
Uh, yeah, so that's, that's my guess, anyway. I don't know, they don't really tell me everything they're doing. I don't recall that being in the plan, so that just might be a reaction.
Right.
You know, it's all ratted up or anything from other trucks that drive over, so.
Yeah, I guess I would appreciate maybe somebody following up on that and enlightening us as to what's gonna be happening on the corner.
They weren't, so that was not in the plans, so.
Wasn't in the plans.
Yeah, we need to push back heavily.
Absolutely, because that's gonna, it looks like it's gonna take a huge piece of the corner off of his yard, even though it probably belongs to the DOT. It's gonna require removing the lamp, the street lamp, and possibly the, I'm not sure what they're doing there, but, you know, living here long enough, I know that something's going on, and I would really appreciate somebody finding out and pushing back, please.
The only, I'm sorry, Peggy, go ahead.
That's it.
I was gonna say, the only thing that I've seen going on over there so far, just a couple stakes that are stuck in the, on the radius there on the
Right.
They haven't started digging yet, have they?
No. We don't want them to start digging. We want, we wanna find out what's going on.
We need to keep that corner, or people are just gonna go faster.
No kidding.
Yeah, no, that's not a good idea. Zach, let's follow up tomorrow, okay?
I'll do my best.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get with you tomorrow. Okay, thanks, Peggy.
Thank you, Peggy. They are working, they, I mean, they're working further down on South Main Street, but I can walk by there in the morning, too, and see what she, what she's talking about.
Yeah, so you can check it out. Yes, Dorothea?
Um, Dr. Foss would like to speak.
Yes.
Hi, Dr. Foss, you're ready to speak. Ms. Foss, you're able to speak. You can unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, this is actually Robert Corby on Margot Foss's laptop, 7 Washington Avenue. I just wanted to comment on, because I've also noticed the work at Jefferson and South Main Street. That would be in direct conflict with, with our, our active transportation plan for the village, which really emphasizes the importance of tight turning radiuses as a traffic calming device. Widening that will enable cars and trucks to move through there faster. It already is a dangerous intersection for pedestrians. And I would also raise the issue, if there is a street light coming out, that's an issue that should be referred to HPP. Also, shippo, because those harp lights, which were installed in 1926, are an important part of the village and are one of the reasons why the village constitutes a historic cultural landscape. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. It's not in the plan, so, you know, we are following up, and those are all really great points. Any other questions, Dorothea?
At this time.
Okay. Thank you, Zach.
Welcome.
Steve, we wanna circle back to you. We had just done your report before you came on. Was there anything you wish to add, or did anybody have any additional questions for Steve? We're good?
I have, I do have one question.
Yeah, sure, Lily.
I noticed that the, the very last agenda item is Main Street lighting. Will Steve, will you still be here?
Yeah.
For that, okay, that was my question. I didn't know whether to maybe approach the subject now while you're here, in case you had to leave sometime during the meeting, so I, I will wait, since you'll be here at the end.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, treasurer's report.
Okay, looks like Brooklyn isn't on tonight, so I will go ahead with that. I'm going to request that the board will be pulling the bill for the Bernie, Bernie, Bernie Donigan. And I will resubmit that another time. We're looking into the issue. So if there's any questions?
Any questions for Dorothea?
I had a couple questions. It's probably a question for Zach, but 701, the, oh, no, that's not the one, 698, the portable restrooms, are those still the ones that we put at Shane Place, or is this something for the DOT construction? Are they the portable, what was that for?
Where are you looking now?
Um, 698, or 695, I can't read my writing.
United Reynolds.
Portable restrooms, yes, that's
Those are the ones.
Units that we have down in Shane Place.
Okay, and then 701 window evaluation, what's that?
I think I can speak to that as well. We had, let's see here, Mr. Held into, well, that isn't actually for the village, but he, I don't think he came in for us. He did window evaluations for HPP for residents to make sure whether or not the windows could be replaced or repaired. So it was at their request.
Yeah, he's a consultant, I think, retained by the HPP for that purpose.
Okay.
To do, you know, a site visit, and then, you know, go back with the HPP with a report or a recommendation.
Okay, so that's HPP related?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, and, and then, sorry to ask so many questions, 703, the attorney bills for Zoglin, were those run by the, the board chair already?
I would believe they were to be on the bill pay. Brooklyn's not here for me to ask that question. So if the board would like to issue the approval pendant on the answer to that question, and if not, if they weren't, I can pull them.
Okay.
That's a good way to go.
I'd like to do that.
Yeah, and just also, just for the record, you know, about the portable Johns, we wouldn't be supplying them for NICE Dot. They have their own facilities, everything, they just take care of it.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean NICE Dot, I meant Paddle and Core.
Oh.
I had NICE Dot notes in front of me, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, either way, yeah, no, but thanks for asking that, yeah.
Covers theirs.
I'm sorry?
Paddle and Core covers their, what are parties is.
Right, yeah. Yeah, they do. Yeah, Steve, did you have your hand up?
Yeah. Yes, I was just curious. Renee, were you asking about did the board authorize Mr. Held? Is that what you were questioning?
I was, it just said window evaluation, so I didn't know what that was. I didn't know if it was something at Village Hall or if it was, I just wanted some clarification. That was all.
I kind of like to, just for curiosity, should it be like officially authorized by the HPP each time he evaluates? Should it be a motion or anything like that, or, because typically when people call and replace, I just refer the list to them, and they contact the people on the evaluator list.
So my suggestion would be to speak with that board's attorney, with their legal counsel, and with the chair, and make sure, you know, that the process is in place.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks. Okay, I'll entertain a motion with, with the amendment, right, to?
Yes.
The amendment. Well, the amendment is to approve the Zoglin bill pending review by the board chair, okay?
Plus remove the Bernie Donigan, so.
Oh, and plus removing, yes, thank you, the Donigan bill for now, okay. Renee, you had a second, so there's, roll call, please.
Okay, trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Trustee Stutzer.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Village Clerk's report.
Okay, well, I have, that's me. You received two sets of financials, one a little while ago, so I'm going to actually address the April financials that you received. Marches were pretty standard. There was a few highlights for negative numbers, but I'm gonna deal with them with April. I think it's better to get them all in one swoop right now. The numbers are pretty good. I'm just getting to, March doesn't wanna go away in my paperwork, so hold on here, real quick. So I'm just gonna really quick touch on the trial balance. Right now, the unreserved fund balance is sitting at $454,934.14. Our I have two numbers with that, and that is our projected fund balance. And we have our unencumbered fund balance, which is $727,934.61. And as a, the projected fund balance is $454,054.14. The fund balance I gave you prior was our starting fund balance, so that's still what shows on the balance sheet. I'm anticipating, although it's projecting that, I'm anticipating we're gonna be much higher. Somewhere in between where we stand today and where it's projecting us, because we only have one month left. And I'm going to guarantee we're not expending another $326,000, and I know we're gonna earn more than another $52,000 in revenue, so that puts us somewhere in between. So I don't have the final answer for the board at this point, but the numbers look good for the fund balance.
That's great, thank you.
So, all that looks great. Going into our revenues, I just wanna touch on a couple areas quick. The parking tickets, you'll see, we still haven't earned any money on that, and as I informed the board, that's kind of a falsehood. It's going into a due-to, due-from with the state, and we're still figuring all that out and getting it transferred, because we have to send the money out, and then we get a check back, and then we can claim it as revenue. So I'm still working with Brooklyn, we're still getting that resolved, because it's a, it's an agreement between town and state, and everybody's gotta do a certain thing, and we haven't quite gotten that figured out yet to get that rolling the way it should be doing. And the other number I wanna touch real quick is on the donor miscellaneous money. This is where I put the dividend we receive from our workers' comp insurance. In the past, we have applied it to the actual workers' compensation line to the expenditure. I don't wanna do that, because it kind of gives a, I don't wanna say a false number, but it doesn't give a true number of what the actual insurance is. Dividends can't be dependent on, so we don't wanna budget and show it in our numbers, because it'll give a false number. If you're looking at like past year's history, you're gonna see that number reduced, because we applied that dividend. I don't wanna do that. I'd rather have it just come in as miscellaneous money. And I did talk to our accountant about that, and that's fine, okay? Any questions on those items?
Is there a motion?
Nope, not done yet. I'm just going, no, I'm almost done. We have a few negatives, and I show all the highlights. We had some software support that went over. Not too surprising, different lines with personnel services, with Zach, with doing work, and we straightened those out, and I provided the board with budget transfers at the end, sewer, nothing much in that, a little healthcare overage. Outside of that, I just need a motion to accept March and April's financials, as well as authorize the budget transfers.
Renee, yes?
I have a quick question. Let me pull up the packet. So on the April A200, it says cash checking minus $46,719. minus forty-six thousand seven hundred and nineteen.
It's on paper only.
Okay.
Where it's, it's the difference in when we transferred the money and the bill pay and it could have been payroll. It could have been a bill, like we had our meeting by the time the checks got run or the payroll fell on, you know, we did the deposit April twenty-ninth, but the payroll's a May payroll. Those things all affect, it's in paper only. It's not true. We're, we're not running negative at the bank.
So it's a timing.
It's a timing issue. We've been working on it. It's getting much better, but there's sometimes we can't avoid it. And we had it recently with just that the checks, payroll checks were dated. I'm just using a fictitious date. No one checked me on this, like May first. And we transferred the money on April twenty-ninth.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else? So I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second? Somebody?
All second, sorry, I dropped my pencil.
Call please.
Yes, trustee Stutzer.
Hi.
Trustee Limpier.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes. I hope to have the May financials done shortly. We are technically caught up and we're right in schedule. So as soon as those are done, I will be sending those under separate cover as soon as possible. I know we don't have a meeting until later in June and wait, we are in June. Wow, July. I lost a month. So that you can see it prior to the July meeting. Okay?
And thanks for all your hard work. Dorothy has been working weekends just to really close things out. So it's really appreciated. Thank you so much.
Not a problem.
So now we're on to minutes?
Yes, we had a change from trustee like it provided, and I just want to see if we can approve these tonight. We cannot. I'm going to I'm going to hold these till our next meeting. So.
Okay. That's great because for once in my life, I forgot to read the minutes. I'm so sorry.
Okay, there we go. It all worked out.
So now I can get my chance.
Yeah, right. Lily, did you have your hand up?
Me?
Did you have your hand up, I thought?
The reason I did is because I wanted to point out I wasn't present at the April twenty-sixth meeting. And since there are only three of us, we wouldn't have a forum to vote.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, thank you for that. That's a for so many reasons, we're not doing the minutes.
There's just many, many, many reasons.
I know.
Mayor Plummer, I will point out Mr. Steinmetz is here.
Oh, great.
And we're kind of still not at a quorum to deal with the C I P P bid awards, so it might be a good time to move that item up.
That's right. That's right. Okay. Yeah, why don't we move up item number three, which is just grant writing and funding opportunities? Just wanted to bring this back to the board. We did have, yes, Lily.
Oh, I'm sorry, but the second part of that was Ran Creek. So that is not part of the C I P P. Did you still want to discuss Ran Creek because I had questions?
We still will do it, but I think in deference to Mr. Steinmetz, who is out of town and sort of pulled over by the side of the road to join the meeting. I'm just jumping this item up just a bit to
Oh, sure.
Allow him, yeah, yeah, we'll get back to the
Oh, just a question. Okay.
Yeah, no, thanks, Lily. Yep, thank you. So anyway, we just wanted to bring this back to the board. As you know, we've had some presentation by some other engineering firms. We're looking at grant cycles right now. One of them is the L W R P, the Local Waterfront Revitalization Plan or Program. And the, that grant cycle closes on July twenty-ninth. And we have an opportunity to get some funding. As you, as we all know, we have the erosion on the canal path. And the engineer, correct me if I'm wrong, Zach, but the engineer said possibly mid-July, they would start shoring up that embankment. That's what they're hoping to do. They've been a little off schedule because of other more serious seepage, I guess, in the canal. So again, we have an opportunity to sort of revisit our concept for Shane Place in our comprehensive plan and maybe put some pieces together to go after some funding to expand on that canal path and take a look at Shane Place, at that road and some of the things that we already have adopted in our comp plan and maybe move things ahead in terms of another level of revitalization down there. So John's, John is with, now with Bergman. And we have done work, a lot of work with John in the past. And we welcome him tonight to just talk about maybe some of the opportunities and how his firm could help us. Because really, at this point, we have a deadline coming up. And we would need some help with writing this grant and putting together at least the conceptual plan to move forward for, in terms of design and then also implementation. So welcome, John. How are you?
Thanks, Mayor. How are you doing? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we sure can. Thanks.
I'm actually, I'm on the side of the road. I made it to my vacation rental, so the music's loud next door, so I apologize if you can hear it. That's, that's my, nothing I can do about.
Hey, well, I don't hear it, but even better. So now you're in a good spot. Okay.
Hi, everybody.
So do you want to just, you know, maybe kind of give sort of an overview of some things that were being discussed?
Sure. So you know, grand time is here, as the mayor said. And, you know, the, the village has a lot of the good documentation you need to write in, put together a successful grant application. You've got a current conference of plan. You, you're always consistent with your planning efforts. The local waterfront revitalization plan is a little out of date, but it's still current, it's still on file with the, with the state. So that is still valid. And, you know, the mayor and I met on Thursday, I think, and just had to kind of go over things. And it wasn't specifically tied towards the C F A, but it quickly went that direction. And, you know, so there is a window of opportunity to potentially apply for either scenario one, planning money to say, all right, what do we want? The edge of Shane Place potentially, you know, can we, can we extend the pedestrian promenade out into the canal way with, obviously with Canal Corp's blessing, kind of, you know, tee that off, make a right angle rather than a rough edge, which would give just by eye, I don't know, six to eight, ten more feet of pedestrian walkway. So is it an opportunity to re-envision Shane Place waterfront promenade potentially? If you did that, would you also put the roadway in the mix and say, here's all the public realm from the, you know, the inside curb, which, you know, inside curb near the private property out to the water? Is this an opportunity to rethink that? Potentially make it softer, potentially make it so there's some shared public realm like the conference of plan talked about, that you potentially close off some of that street for a festival here or there. And also with, you know, we've gotten smarter as designers, environmentally friendly, more sustainable. So is it, can we make it softer? Can we make it more green? Less, less hardscape, for example, just ideas out there. We haven't put pen to paper, obviously. But there is an opportunity through the C F A to either, again, scenario A, request design and planning money to create that vision. Or if you wanted to be more aggressive, we can talk about that in a second. Apply for essentially implementation money to do final design and then some kind of phase one construction. If you're going to go scenario two, which I understand the appeal is like, you know, let's, let's get going this year and potentially a year from now when the, if we're successful with a grant application. The challenge is in order to ask for implementation money, you need to know it's kind of an ideal of what you're doing and more importantly, how much money you're asking for. Because if you ask for two million, unless you get two million and you think the prize can be four million, but it becomes six or eight or ten million, you have to come up with a difference. So you need to make sure your ask is informed. And I think that's what we want to have the conversation tonight is, you know, there's six weeks, give or take, for the application deadline. Is it something the village should consider pursuing under the L W R P for their planning and design money or implementation money? A couple of things to keep in mind. With any grant application, you're essentially waiting a year. Applications are due the end of July. You'll hear in December. And then by the time you get the contract signed with the state, it's usually May. So you're talking about a year before you can get started either with design or started with any kind of, you know, design slash construction. So, you know, if we went for planning and design money this year, we'd finish that probably two years from now. You'd be applying for implementation money three years from now. I got more I can say, but I'll shut up and just kind of open up to the, to all of you. And, and if you have questions on, you know, what does this opportunity mean? Let's have a conversation.
Thanks, John. Yes, Renee.
Implementation versus, you know, money for design and whatnot. Don't we have a pretty good idea already because of our comprehensive plan? I mean, we have some conceptual things, but what, what is it better to apply for? Do we need to do the funding for design or can we just do implementation given everything else we have?
Really good, really good question. The one, the one detail, and it's, it's, you know, pretty important to what we're talking about tonight. You know, our, our team, Chris Lopez, I'm proud of the work we did. The one thing we didn't put a lot of energy in is the edge. You know, so if, for example, you know, we looked at some street view images and I know Shane Place pretty well. You've got, you know, the road is asphalt, obviously. You've got a little bit of tree planting and then you have more asphalt and then you have the canal. None of that was really touched, you know, in any, any meaningful way, like what might the materials be? If we, are we able to widen the promenade area into the canal to kind of make it consistent with where the, you know, the boat dock is in front of lock thirty-two? If we were able to do that, what does that mean? What does the next thirty years of that edge look like? We didn't look at that. We didn't look at plantings. We didn't look at permeable pavement. You know, we talked about those things as a concept, but we didn't actually say, oh, if we can, and I could, you know, if we can widen this stretch of the promenade, I'm making these numbers up. I haven't measured it. From say ten to sixteen feet, what do we do that extra six feet? Is it seagrasses? Is it permeable pavement? We didn't get into the fine brain of design to say, is this, I'm making this up, don't, I, no, call me on this. Is this an X million dollar project or an X X million dollar project? You know, we don't know until you talk materials and finishes and widths and, you know, quantities.
Yeah, good point. Yeah, it was really sort of oriented to traffic, as I recall, pedestrian pathways. You know, maybe a different circulation pattern. Yes, Lily.
Thank you. Thank you, John. This is trustee Limpier speaking. I, if we, I don't understand if we are being asked to vote this evening. I understand the time is of the essence. But there's a lot of information to absorb. Part of what I would want to have more information about is funding. When you're talking about the difference between a design for, and, and then the implementation, there's quite a jump there in, in the millions of dollars. And I, I would like to have a discussion with the trustees regarding our funding going forward and where the money would come from. So there would be that. I, I would think I would be on the conservative side and understand applying for a grant for design elements and for discussion as how, how it works with the comprehensive plan. So I, I think I would take a more conservative approach than trying to look to fund, to look for a grant for the, for the entire, for it's an entirety. I think there's a lot of aspects here that we would want to consider and bring the public in for their comment. And I think it feels like a little bit too much pressure to try to have it all done by July. Did you say indicate July twenty-ninth? Is that, is the date? So I, I would hope that we would be able to discuss it as a full board before that time and talk about the pros and cons.
Thank you, Lily. Yes, Dan.
We are discussing it. Secondly, John, thank you. Nice to see you. I'm, I'm glad that you've put your big brain on this and your specific knowledge of the village. Really appreciate it. My question is not related to you, though. My question is for the rest of the trustees. What was, was John Reddington made aware of this? Because the, the agenda item says something like, you know, grant writers, funding opportunities. He, he had expressed interest in, in working with us on this kind of thing as well. And I want to make sure that while we know and trust John, we, we do have somebody else that.
He is in the loop on that and he did the presentation, as you may recall, you know, what was it, last month? What, what probably would come out of this in some fashion is that there would be a motion to authorize Scott Harder as our village engineer to, you know, prepare and then send out an R F P to three firms and it could be Bergman, Trowbridge. And the other person I met with, and I guess he's, he's, he wasn't available, Matt Horn, who also worked on the Fairport project as well. And he's with M R B. So that would probably be part of this process. I, I would like to say as well, and thanks for bringing that up because, you know, we have so many wonderful qualified people to work with. I also like to say that I did walk Shane Place with Adam Bello and also Howard Mafucci. And the county has a significant amount of funding. They have a hundred and forty-four million dollars worth of ARPA funding. And we certainly, this project could be eligible for some of that. So it could be plugged in perhaps in another way to this project. And John, you may want to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if you, if we do receive funding, it, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five split.
Correct.
Could you speak to that?
Yeah, and, and a couple of things of what I just, what we just talked about, what I heard. So yeah, it's, it's seventy-five, twenty-five, seventy-five state, twenty-five local. So it's, it's pretty good money. In terms of some of the comments that were just brought up, they're all good. And, you know, there, there is two completely distinct ways to think about this. And, and unfortunately for you, my experience is both can have success. So for example, the, the well thought out, let's go for design money and then use that money to have a collaborative public process and know what, know all the answers. You know what the design's going to be. We know what the costs are going to be. And then go for grant money essentially probably two, two or three years from now, by the time you get the funding and go for the, get the design done and then go for the next round of funding. That works. That's, that's obviously a very, very informed way to approach this. I can't argue that. Unfortunately, I've also seen, we're, we're doing projects right now for clients where they've gone in with a loose plan. They got the funding to do final design and construction. And during the final design and construction, that's when they did the collaborative process. They brought the public in and they got all the answers. They dotted their i's and crossed their t's. So, and, and that has worked for communities. It's obviously a bigger risk. It's a lot more unknown. That's undeniable. But both has worked. So it's just a matter of if either of these appeal to the village in this round. It's, there's an opportunity right now with the window for the C F A open. If you, if you decided to pick scenario one or two or punt for next year, there's nothing wrong with that. That's, that's obviously a decision that a lot of communities do to have more conversation around this topic before submitting an application.
Thank, thank you. And, and just sort of touching back to Renee's earlier comment. You know, we, we do have the concept in place that has been adopted and vetted through charrettes for Shane Place in our comp plan. So it would be, you know, where do we start fleshing that out? How do we want to do that? Was there another hand up? I'm sorry. Oh, Dorothea.
Yes, we do have a couple of hands up and we have a question and Q and A if the board's ready to entertain those.
Sure.
The Q and A question is, Mr. Pierce's question is, possibly share any reports, written thoughts, conceptual designs with Bergman Associates, his production shared with any board member. I don't believe we've received anything at this time, correct?
Yes, Renee?
So what we're talking about right now is proposing that we would put an R F P out for someone to help us to write these grants that are due.
Yes. Turn it around and go for some, a grant at some level in terms of what we wish to do.
So that, if we were to do that, whoever we chose would be able to help us determine whether we need to do an implementation grant or a planning grant or right? We wouldn't need to know that before we put the R F P out?
That's interesting. John, do you want to speak to that? You've had more experience probably than all of us.
Yeah, two, two things. I don't think you needed to be that specific. The challenge is, I think realistically, and, and again, you guys, I think you know me, I'm not trying to pressure you into hiring anything. This is a, a soft, a general conversation the mayor and I had, and then there just happens to be this window of opportunity. I think to go out to R F P and, and with any firm, M R B, myself, Trowbridge Wolf, and then expect it's going to take you a week to get the R F P out, us to respond two to three, I don't think there's enough time. I don't think there's enough time for this round. Because it's, you've got six weeks. It'll take you probably a month to secure a consultant, give or take. So that, you know, I'm not saying don't do that. So that, you know, I'm not saying, don't do that. Of course, that's the, the rational thing to do. But I just don't think that's realistic um, to get that done and then get the grant in, in a two-week period.
Yeah, thanks, John. Yes, Renee.
Well, don't we have to do it that way?
That was my understanding. Oh, Jeff isn't here this evening. I know.
I hear everything that John's saying, but I think we might be, I, I think we have to do it that way.
Yeah, typically we do. So, uh, yeah, Dorothea.
Um, we have a question, but let me speak to our
Process?
Process. There you go. I can't get the words out tonight. Um, with uh, professional services, anything over five thousand dollars, we need an RFP, RFQ. If the board authorized it tonight to go ahead and put out that RFP, we could give them. I know it's short timeframe for the people involved, a week or two weeks, and then bring it back to the board early July. That's the best suggestion I can give. It would be tight, but according to our professional service agreement, unless we deem this this is super specialized, the board could make a decision that way. But I think you're, you're caught because of the cost of putting that grant writer together.
Yeah, I, um, I did have a quick conversation with Scott Harder, telling him, you know, he couldn't be here tonight. You know, just mentioning that we were going to be talking about this and he said he'd be glad to, you know, turn it right around uh, next week and get something out um, on behalf of our board. Um, you know, he's in the loop. Yeah, Renee and then Dan.
So this, um, are, are the LW, LWRP grants an annual thing? So we would have to wait another year or are these a special way, given all the money that's coming down? Okay. So we would wait an entire?
The other, the other piece of this, I mean, the money is available now, um, you know, at, at these different levels. And it may not be as available next year, just given the economy and kind of where things are going. So you know, I think it's something we should really strongly consider acting on in some fashion at this point.
Mayor, one thing if I could, um, the two things, actually not one thing I'll seek to. The, the LWRP funding, the good news is it's through the environmental protection fund, so it's a I can't remember. I think it's a five-year bonding cycle, but the money will be there. I can't recall. It's, it's one of
Oh, that's good to know. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely one of the more predictable, um, ones. It's, it's not necessarily subject, I'm sure, big picture it is, but it's not subject to political whims or we, I want to start a Main Street program or this program. It, you know, there's a designated pot of money that it's part of. So I think we're okay next year. I, I feel very confident it would be there regardless of leadership at the state level. Um, so that's good news.
So even if we, even if we got some funding this year, we could go back again and the funding could still be there.
You could typically, any, not any, but most CFA programs don't want to have two grants out at the same time. So they'll, they'll, they'll want you to complete one, show that you're responsible physically and otherwise, and all that jazz. Now, the, one of the pros of waiting next year is if, and we're, we're in conversations with the county for other projects. The county is still trying to figure out how, how it's gonna spend and distribute this hundred and forty-plus million dollars through the Recovery Act. There's potential, again, this might, I might end up having, you know, egg in my face and this might not work out. But there's potential for that money to be used as a local match for grants like this, but we won't know that probably, probably well into the, well into the next six months. You know, the county has to get their own affairs in order with that financially. So, I, you know, eight, I would say nine or ten months from now, let's not wait until six weeks before it's due. But nine or ten months from now, if the county should know the story, the county should say, hey, we're gonna use this as local match for grants like this or we're not. But it would be a potential that the county could be using their money for a local match for an application for something like this. The other thing that we don't, this doesn't preclude is if you went for implementation money next year. I know this, what I'm about to say is village dollars. I know you guys have a small budget, um, you know, given your size. But you could also fund a mini master plan effort to shore up some very preliminary details in terms of finishes and widths and quantities. Very soft, a conceptual plan with local dollars over the next six, eight months. And then have that in place for potential implementation money next year. So you could self-fund some planning for implementation next year, or you could ask for planning dollars now. And like I said, you won't get those for another year. That'll take you six, eight months to do it. So you're talking the difference of a year. So it depends on if you want to apply next year, self-fund a little mini master plan of the edge wall and chain place, um, pedestrian, public realm. Or apply for implementation, or excuse me, apply for planning money and that'll be done in two years from now.
Self-funding, if I'm understanding that, tightens up the time, timeframe.
It does. Yeah, it absolutely does.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that. Yes, Dan.
So a couple of things. Um, John, to that point, um, we don't do anything quickly around here. You, you were part of this process. It take, it's gonna take us a while. But, but so now my question is a process one. So when Scott Harder puts out this RFP, we have a quick turnaround on it. Um, I would request that we request of him that he does it in a Google Doc so we can all um, give input to it quickly and publicly and viewable. Um, if he can't do that, then please send over an editable Word document that we can make edits to. But first choice is a Google Doc so we can each have at it.
Okay, thanks. Okay, um. Any, yes, Dorothea?
I do have a public comment, a person raising their hand. So, is the board okay with that?
Yes.
Um, I'm not sure if it's Dr. Foster or not. You're free to speak.
Uh, hi, it's Robert Corby again, seven Washington Avenue. Couple issues. Um, just uh, some, some pointers that you should consider as you consider these improvements. Fairport has a problem because they have hard edges on both sides of the canal. And the canal is much narrower there. So they've created sort of a wave pool uh, where the waves reverberate back and forth. Uh, when we did our previous projects, one of the reasons we didn't put in more hardage is we wanted to avoid that creating that condition in the harbor area in the village. So that's something, when you design this, you really need to consider that. Because you will end up with that if you put in too much hardage. Uh, the other point I wanted to make, actually, I've got three points. Uh, on the comp plan, the committee rejected the idea of severing Shane Place and redirecting the traffic to the to the railroad right of way for, for a variety of reasons. Number one, seven months of the year when the weather is not great. Uh, having the traffic in its current flow benefits the existing retail businesses that are on that street. It also is the traditional route of traffic through Shane Place. And the other big reason is that the roadway has a specific relationship with the major landmarks on that street, including the Pittsburgh Flower Mill and the historic uh, Hutcheson Zorno Bean Mill. And, you know, the way the station, there's a, you know, the, the physical relationship of the street to those properties and to the water edge is part of what constitutes Shane Place as a historic cultural landscape. Um, I toured the area with a deputy commissioner from Shippel. And, uh, you know, there should be some inventory of the key historic features. So as we move into a project like this, we understand what's important to keep and, and what can be adapted. If you look at the new improvements in Fairport, those wouldn't pass muster for review by Shippel. And because of everything that's been done on Shane Place was done with grants. And we will also be impacting the navigation on the canal. It will require a section one oh six review from, from Shippel. And I would recommend you do engagement in the preservation issues with a qualified consultant, somebody who's qualified under Federal Register thirty-six CFR. So it's not an afterthought, but it's integral into the uh, out, outset of the design of the project. It's exciting uh, to move Shane Place forward and I congratulate the board for looking to the next step. But we all want to make sure that it's done right and we don't compromise. We have the most intact historic mill warehouse district along the entire length of the canal. And we want to ensure that we preserve the historic integrity of that district. Thank you.
Thanks. I think we're all in agreement and thanks for all those good comments and, uh, you know, where I think we're all aware of that as well. John, did you want to comment on any of that?
No, I, I think that's absolutely right. I mean, I, I clearly the, um, the historic nature of Pittsburgh cannot be debated. I mean, that is one of your greatest assets. So any design needs to take into account the historic context of Shane Place and how it relates to everything around it. Absolutely.
You know, and, and to that end, we're not Fairport. You know, we are unique. And so that is something, you know, that we we need to protect that integrity for sure. Anything else? Uh, you know, I, I'm sort of of the thought that, you know, at the very least, we certainly could put out the RFP for, for, uh, just, you know, the, the planning component. To kind of get that piece going. Maybe as Lily, you know, you said, maybe not the big, the big stuff, but let's see if we can at least take a look at um, how we do reclaim that promenade in a way that really works for us, for our village and for Shane Place historically. So, you know, maybe that's the direction at this point. I'm getting some nods, you know, just trying to
That's, that's sound.
Okay, so, um, anything else, John, that you want to add? You know, we're just bringing this back to the board at this point?
No, again, if, if you have any questions where I can be of assistance, you know how to reach me. Thanks for having me.
And, and thank you so much, John, really for taking the time and enjoy your vacation.
Thank you, everyone.
John, so much.
Have a good night.
So, you know, I, I, I think, you know, this has been a good discussion because we kind of know we want something, but, you know, do we want to sort of get the whole enchilada and maybe we don't. So, um, you know, I would entertain a motion to authorize Scott Harder at this point to prepare and send out an RFP, uh, you know, to Bergman, to Trowbridge with John Reddington's firm. And I'm sorry, Matt Horn couldn't be here tonight. Uh, we tried to reach him. He's with MRB. As I said, he's done work on a lot of um, other canal front uh, communities. They're a highly respected firm out of Geneva. And he is the director of municipal services in this region for uh, the company. But um, maybe we're throwing them in the mix. Um, but getting back to the motion. The purpose would be to um, have these, one of these firms assist our village in preparation of, uh, prep, preparing the grant for revitalizing our waterfront and specifically our piece, that portion of our canal path. You know, to, that's, that's the motion I'm thinking of. Does anybody want to add to that or talk? Yes, Lily?
Thank you. Uh, I would like to clarify that um, what I, what I expressed earlier that I would hope that we would have specifically laid out in the RFP that this is for design services. Okay, that, as long as, um, as part of the motion, then I will, I would second that motion.
Yeah, that was in the beginning of the motion. Yeah, thank you. Yep, yes, Dan.
And um, at, please add that, uh, would like a draft sent to us preferably as a Google Doc. Second choice is a Word document so that we may edit it.
Okay, with a draft for board review. Okay, that, that's great. Yeah.
Do you want to, do you want to say your motion again? It was very
I know, I know, I kind of got it. Okay, um. A motion to authorize Scott Harder uh, to prepare and send out an RFP to three firms for the purpose of assisting the village in grant preparation uh, that, for the design and um, and planning for waterfront revitalization in the village uh, on Shane Place and specifically along the canal path. Did I get it all?
No.
And the Word doc piece, he, he said preferably
By the board prior to being sent out.
Preferably as a Google Doc and second choice is a Word document.
Gotcha.
Got it, Dorothea?
Getting it all. Okay, we have a motion, I think. Is there a second?
Anyway, the seconded by Lanfeer.
Okay, thank you, Lily. Yes, Dorothea?
Um, would you like to do the vote and then take the public comment?
That feels wrong. I think we should hear it first.
There's a comment, comment, hand came up. Ms. Carabares, you're able to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, um, I would suggest that you send the RFP out to more than three firms. Especially um, in the context that Bob was talking about, that we might want to send send it out to more preservation oriented firms as well. Not that these other firms aren't qualified, but I, I think this is an important enough project that we would want at least six or more um, responses and uh, you know, give them all the same deadline, but you know, I, I, I just think that would be helpful to the board.
Sure, we can send it out to a number of firms, absolutely.
Why, why six? That seems like a very, very number. Yeah, that, that's a, I, I don't want that in the record that we're gonna get six.
I don't know that we need six. But I, I agree, sending it to more, yeah.
More than three.
Yeah, yeah, opening it up so that we might get someone to respond that we didn't initially um, think of. Yes, I agree with that.
Sure. That sounds great. Thank you for that. Yeah, I mean, typically we were just talking about, you know, our process when we do an RFP that it's always three, you know, for the most part. So this is great. Okay, we have a motion in a sec. Yes, Renee.
One more question before we vote. Do we need to put a deadline um, in the motion or, uh, I'm sorry, do we need to include in this motion a deadline for the response to the RFP?
Um, I think, would our village engineer handle that? Because he knows the deadline for the grant. In other words, he, that would be part and parcel of what Mr. Harder would do. You know, set those parameters as in terms of the response.
Establish a realistic deadline.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think, you know, I don't know that we need that level of detail. Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Okay, um, trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfeer?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes and you have a Q and A question.
Okay.
Okay, fol- following up, this is Art Pierce following up with Peggy's comments, recommended possible EDR.
He's already had a, he's already had a question. To, to, isn't that part of this, that we only allow one set of questions?
Typically it is, but you know, let's just take the comment. He's, he's here and we'll move them. Yeah.
Okay.
And, and this, and to my point, this is why our meetings are three, four hours long. There, there is a rule.
Understand.
Understand. Yeah, no.
And, and we're going, we're going to go through, we're going to go through this process for months and years. The, the time to have public input will be great.
Okay, thank you.
Board like me to read or not?
Um, it's at the deference of the mayor and let's read it.
Okay, Mr. Pierce says, following up on Peggy's comments, recommended possible EDR and standard. If wanted to select more than three, thank you, Mayor. Other boards allow more than one Q and A.
Okay. Thank you. All right, uh, moving on, let's circle back then to the bid awards and we can do the Rand Creek Award. Yeah, Lily.
Thank you. I, I needed a clarification uh, on the Rand Creek portion. The um what we are voting on is the funding for the project or the funding for the research on the project. That's one of my questions.
This, this is funding to actually implement and complete the entire project.
Okay, thank you.
It has been researched and vetted. And now it has gone through the Army Corps of Engineers. Zach, correct me if I'm missing somebody, it's gone through DEC. It, we're now back to the point where we have a bid for a contractor to actually do what those entities have approved for our village.
Okay, thank you. And do we have, or did we receive, and I, and it's probably among my files somewhere, uh, the plan that was, that was uh, submitted regarding, what I'm asking about specifically is, are the utilities or the, the infrastructure that was indicated exactly where it lies? Did we, did we have that in a plan? Do we have a site plan or whatever uh, information we got from Scott, exactly where everything lies? I don't recall seeing that. Did we receive that?
But Scott's not here tonight. Zach, would you be able to speak to some of that?
Yeah, I, I'm pretty sure Scott did submit that to the board at one point. It was, it was presented at one of the meetings, but I can't remember when because it's kind, this, this whole project's been going on for so long. Um, all the utilities were taking, taken off of uh, um, the, the drawings that Scott was
The drawings that Scott was able to get from the county, I believe, and also we did an onsite stakeout to see where they physically were onsite. So all the utilities are accounted for, to the best of our knowledge, not to say that everything is supposed to be where it is underground because it's been there for a long time and stuff does move and. I think we're pretty well prepared for it at this point.
Yeah, I mean, we're dealing with old infrastructure, you know, yes, Dan?
I wasn't done with my question.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Lily, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So you're indicating, Zach, that they were, they were located next to the creek?
Yes.
Is that correct? On the village side?
Uh, yes, village side.
Okay, thank you. So they don't run under the creek. They run next, or they do run under?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The second part is that we had talked about this before and I don't recall the answer to this one. And that is regarding the privately owned aperture. Now, where the, where the water comes through, the very small pipe that runs underneath the driveway. The, the, the private lane that leads up to the three houses on Rand Place Extension. So that aperture, because we. I have firsthand knowledge of this because I was present when, when it was discussed. And that was because of the velocity of the water during an event, storm event, that it shoots through that. And then it sort of negates any revestment work or whatever work occurs there. So it's sort of. Unless that is addressed first, the rest of it. Is not going to stand.
Yeah, just to be clear, this has been, everything that you are asking, they're all great questions. They have been asked and answered. And responded to in great detail by the Army Corps of Engineers and by DEC. In, in, and they reviewed the plans that Scott Harder submitted. It's, as far as I know, they've approved it. We are now at the end stage where we simply implement. The project based on the fact that the Army Corps of Engineers and DEC approved it.
Okay, and are we, are, are we indicating at this time by approval? That we are using, utilizing ARPA funds to pay for it? Is that part of this approval?
We had discussed that with the board and the ARPA funds for this contractor, eighteen thousand five hundred out of a total. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dorothea, a hundred and. Thirty-six thousand? I believe, because we get sixty-eight K. You're, you're muted, Dorothea.
Yeah, it's somewhere in that range. It's, we haven't received the second funding, but we will. This was, this is perfect for an ARPA project, so it's going to. It's one of the attempts.
I understand that, but what I'm asking is it, did I miss out on the meeting where the board determined that they were. They wanted to utilize the ARPA funds specifically for this project without any discussion. About other ways that we could utilize that money in the village without any public input or similar.
I think that's not actually an accurate characterization. Dorothea, did you want to?
We, we have. We have, we have ARPA on the agenda, you know, this is, the board has to make a decision with ARPA money. They haven't done that. Once you make a decision, if you decide that this is. And the discussion has been discussed using ARPA for that, for this project. If the board decides to use this amount of money for ARPA, there's nothing saying you can't decide to take the rest of the money and put it towards other projects. This is just one small project that is a perfect ARPA project.
Does that make sense? It, it, I think, you know, with the one hundred and thirty-six thousand, I think that we will be receiving in total. With this netted out, we have over one hundred thousand, we have a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars left of ARPA funding. I think frankly, it's a good use of this. This project has been on the boards, Zach, how many years? Five, I don't know.
Yeah, long time.
You know, and we have. If something happens to that embankment, everybody on that side of the village has a lot of problems with their utilities. So I think for eighteen thousand five hundred dollars, it's, it's protecting our, actually. Protecting our infrastructure and is supportive of our residents on that side in case something were to happen with that bankment. Which we know, embankment which we know has been eroding for years. Did I miss anything, Zach?
Clarify that number again, please. How much ARPA funds are we talking about?
Eighteen thousand five hundred dollars, I think, was the bid? Yes, um, yes, and Dan, yeah?
Okay, a couple of things. One is that I, I'm, I'm wondering if you guys have concerns about this. I do. Yes, their Mason Trenching Company came in with the lowest bid and that's good, eighteen thousand five hundred. And Rock Earth came in at twenty-four one. But when you look at their bids. Mason Trenching has no supporting material around it, just as per engineer's drawing. Whereas. Rock Earth says, all right, we're gonna do the following things. And that's a little bit of a concern to me that. That Mason won't do it. As well, that they don't have as much of an understanding. I can tell you, if I got a bid from a contractor that had almost no information on it. And was thirty percent lower, I would, that's, those are red flags. They don't quite understand what they're gonna do and those are the things that turn into trouble. So I'm not saying no to it. But I would like to see some more information from Mason Trenching as to what they're going to do for that eighteen thousand five hundred. And make sure, now with the next one of these, Scott Harder included the RFP, so we were at least able to see, okay. This is what went out to them, so this is what, this is the information they have. In this one, we're not. And so I just want to make sure that Mason Trenching knows what they are doing for this project. So I, I would request more detail from them before we approve it.
Um, Zach, have, have you worked with Mason Trenching in the past in the village? Have they been doing any other projects?
Doesn't, doesn't matter.
No, I'm just asking, Zach.
No, I, I get it, I get it.
Dan, I have the floor, I have the floor and I'm asking the question of Zach. Thank you.
Mason Trenching has been doing work for the village longer than I've been here. They put the dock in at the Port of Pittsburgh and that was all pending off the same drawings that Scott Harder drew. Not the same as Rand Creek, but drawings that Scott Harder drew up for that. They have done numerous drainage projects for us, including on Rand Place right next to where this creek bank stabilization project is. They've done work throughout the DPW for us. They just replaced all the drainage out in front of the village office for us. That was last year, I believe. Shane Place, more drainage work. They're very familiar with drainage work. They're, they're very competent. Craig is a man of few words. Um, I know that he is currently pretty busy and that may be. For his contract and indicator of that because, you know, there are very few words written on it, but. That doesn't take away from his capability of being able to do the project.
Okay, I just, I just, second part of the question, so. I don't agree. Look, I, I get it. Sure, he's done a lot of good work for us in the past. It, it's a huge problem when a vendor doesn't put any detail. On the work they're going to do and particularly when it's so much less. It's thirty percent less. Than a competitor who, who seems to have a good feel for what this project is. So I, I, I'm not saying no, I would just request a little bit more information from them. The second thing, as for the ARPA funds, Lily, any economist will tell you, if you've got a grant and you need to do the work. Anyway, and you're going to do that work anyway, and you can get paid. By the grant to do it, you should use those funds first. You should use the free money first because there's no guarantee. That ARPA money won't just magically go away because of some political thing. And there's no guarantee that we'll get our act together to use every single dollar of that ARPA money. And so take the projects that we know qualify immediately and that we need to do anyway. It's not a reason to do it because it's free. We need to do this anyway. So to have somebody pay for it. Via ARPA funds really makes the most sense from an economic standpoint.
Dan, thanks for your comments on both, both the points, yeah. Renee, did you have anything to add in or?
Um, I did. What is the timeline for this? Can, do we need to set up? I mean, I agree that we need a little more information on this, this, uh, the estimate, so. What is our timeline? When did we need to approve this? By can it wait till our July meeting or do we need to set up a special meeting? Assuming they do give us something more detailed.
Yeah, I'm thinking we may need a special meeting only because we're trying to line up, you know, labor and seasonal, you know, seasonal work yet. Zach, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, there, there are still a couple of things that the property owners have to sign off on to make it official for us to even do the work. So, so depending on that, and also it sounds like Craig's gonna be, he's booked out until August. So he's looking at a late summer season start time. So I think there may be a little bit of room for him to put some more detail on this and resubmit it to you guys.
Great, so let's, let's do that. Let's, you know, we appreciate Dan's input and Renee yours too and Lily, you know, so. How about if we do that? We just say, let's just circle back with this one particular vendor. And ask them to flesh this out a little bit more and provide us with a, a little more detail as to what they're gonna be doing.
Yeah, and if, if we get it back, great, we can schedule a special meeting because.
We need to.
Yeah, it would be better to get an offer early even though they're saying August.
Yeah. Yeah.
We don't want to push.
Yeah, Zach?
So I just want to clarify that the CIPP bid was put out to public bid, so it was posted in a newspaper. Um, and that's why you see an RFP attached to that. This was a series of emails that Scott had written up and sent to these construction outfits to, to bid on. So there was no RFP outside of that, just the, the drawing that Scott had made that was approved by the Army Corps of Engineers. Submitted with the, uh, just the asking of these companies to, um, to bid on it. So, yeah, I just want, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, no, no, that, thanks for that clarification. That's helpful. Yes, Dorothea?
I have public comment.
Okay.
Mr. Ferris, you're able to speak.
This is David Ferris, twenty-seven Monroe Avenue. I just want to mention on Mason Trenching, I'm familiar with them personally from work they've done. Craig Prince is a person of high integrity. And the question asked earlier, one of the trustees about the plans for this, and they core of Army Engineers. I presume the drawings and plans were provided to the contractors to bid upon. So as to what they're doing, the other project Zach left out was the drainage from Monroe Avenue down to the canal behind the Drake's House. Throw substantial, pretty similar to this work, right? Frankly, it was performed very well, very satisfactory and. Zach mentioned in front of the Village Hall, the Port of Pittsburgh work they did, first rate and low bids and they come in and do their work and I would highly endorse them. I think he, if we provided plans, we know what they're gonna do.
Thanks, Dave, and, and that's probably all true. It, it's just a matter of being responsible and doing our financial oversight. Of the funds of the taxpayers. That's really what it's about. Just need a little more flesh on the bones.
Okay, thanks, Dave, thanks. Okay, so I guess then going forward, we want. I, I guess, do we make a motion to, well, we don't even, we just need more information. Okay, so we'll, we'll circle back with this particular vendor, Zach, and. You know, we'll let Scott know as well, you know, so if Scott needs to interact with the vendor to make sure that, you know, they're providing additional information.
Sure.
Okay. Well, so since Dan joined us, we now could probably discuss the CIPP. Bid. So why don't we circle back to that?
This is the Scanx one. This one did have a lot of information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this contract was pulled from the county contract that they draw up for the same type of work. Um, and we just use that as a template to, to put it out to bid for ourselves. With a lot of manipulation from Scott, she brought a hundred and, or three hundred pages, I think, but, uh, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of good reading.
Yeah.
Um, any que, any questions? I know Scott's not here, but you know, Zach's very familiar with this, this project. And it's nice that, you know, we were able to rebid it, so the town could also benefit from this as well. I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid as presented.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
He had her hand up.
And just to authorize you to sign the contract with Stanix.
That's right, and to authorize me as mayor to sign the contract, yes.
So amended.
So seconded.
Roll call, trustee Lanfear, you're gonna abstain. Trustee Keating?
Why is the abstain? What's the reason?
The appearance of impropriety because I have a relationship with the owner.
Got it.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, guys.
All right, there we go, Zach.
It's like a year and a half in the making, all right.
Yeah. That's good. Okay, so next up, um, ARPA funds. And we have ARPA funds, so. You know, one thought would be, you know, we certainly want to, if we want to have, Lily had mentioned wanting to have the public weigh in on the use of ARPA funds and. You know, there are some parameters for ARPA funds that we have to follow. You know, I'd like to just throw up for discussion that maybe what we do is, um, the town sort of polled their residents, you know, gave them sort of parameters. These are the kinds of projects. And then, you know, residents sort of, I don't know if it was like a mailchimp or whatever, but, you know. Got back and then it was brought back to the board for discussion. So I'm throwing that out for, you know, discussion to this board. Is that something maybe we could do, you know, where we poll our residents? And yes, Lily?
I would very much be in favor of such a poll. Or, or public hearing or whatever way the board would see fit to engage the public and come up with ideas. Either on through social media or on our website. Yeah, or through a meeting.
Yep, I think that'd be great. Yep, any, any thoughts from other board members, Renee?
I think we'll get a lot of ideas, so I like the idea of, of at first allowing people to, to submit them. So that we get the list and then when we're at our meeting and, and having a discussion about it, obviously the public can weigh in additionally there. But at least we'll have a good list. Can we make sure that we provide the guidelines? For, on what the funds can be used for, so people, you know, because there'll be all sorts of ideas. Um, and we'll want to make sure that they're useful.
Yeah.
That everyone understands, yeah, okay.
Yeah, because, you know, there are, they have loosened up somewhat on some of the parameters, but nonetheless, there are, you know, specific parameters and. You know, just so everybody listening, we have to do, Dorothea, I think, is it a quarterly report? Regarding where we are with using those funds?
Yes.
Yeah, so you know, they're, they're tracking how each municipality is using the funds to make sure it's in compliance, basically, with.
You have to submit how you reused it and show that it meets all the criteria. That's why. You know, not to push Rand Creek down the port's throat, but I really, it's so ARPA, it's easy.
It's so ARPA.
So I would suggest, you know, if the board agrees that that's a good use of the funds, deduct that from the comments of what you're actually seeking from. The public, you know, that you really want to use at least this much for, of the ARPA funds for this project. The rest is, you know. Meeting sound, equipment.
Yeah.
Lighting, updating the meeting room for, that's just my option, anyway.
Technology.
It's up to the board.
Yes, and I'm.
Yes, Lily, yes.
I'm, I'm put in, since Dorothea put in. I'm hoping that we, that we will be entertaining ideas for a community. For a community, maybe gathering spaces or enhancements to our existing pocket park or similar. Projects that would be a community. Or in CSAC, now he's got an idea too.
Yeah, I know, his hands up.
Yeah, okay, so that was my, I'd like something to be community based, that all of the community may enjoy.
Yeah, that's, yeah, thank you, that's great, yep, yeah, Zach?
I was gonna ask if ARPA funds could be used for the design or implementation for, for Shane Place.
For part of the, partially, I think, yes, um, partially. We'd have to look into it. The road, for Shane Place, the road, that would be a better fit. We'd have to, we'd have to revisit it, yeah, yeah. That's, you're right, no, that's something to look at for sure, yeah. So I think we're all in agreement. So I guess really the next steps would be, let's put together, you know, sort of our parameters. Dorothea, you have so much information on ARPA and I know Brooklyn does too because, you know, they're tracking the compliance component of it. So why don't we just sit down and make sure we're getting the right parameters together for what we can look at? So why don't we just sit down and, uh, make sure we're getting the right parameters together for what we can look at, okay? And then we'll, we'll float that back out to the board. Um, and then, you know, we can put together, you know, the items for the public and poll the public, you know. And I like the idea of using social media and our website and, you know, that kind of, it's a good opportunity, sure. Because we can turn it around quickly then, which is nice, you know. Because, aren't we, when do we get our next installment? Is it next, August, I think it comes in?
I believe so, it's coming up really quick, um. But giving the timeframe and time spins away from us very quickly, can we anticipate. Getting all this to the board for July for them to review for the qualifications and getting it up on the website with the anticipation discussion in maybe August? Does that sound like a fair time schedule, so we can do it appropriately?
Yeah, that could be good.
Yeah, we got a lot of other things on the plate and I'd rather do it.
Yeah, where we can really have everybody weigh in, for sure. You know, um, but I do agree and I agree also with Dan's comment, um, about using the ARPA funds for the Rand Creek project. With who, whatever vendor we go with. Um, I think it's a perfect use and Dan, you're right, you know, the money's there, we know it needs to be done. So, um, I support that. Um, okay, so we're gonna move forward with that. I just want to, this actually should kind of be, I guess, a member item, this, um, we had Chris Cat, um, on to the next item, the Siemens proposal. Um, we had Chris Cat, uh, you know, talk about, um, sustainability and the role that Siemens can play. Um, helping us implement things and track things, uh, for our village. Um, and so, um, he requested we, that we sort of circle back, he's willing to do just even a one hour. Kind of an open discussion with the board and the public. You know, kind of a Q and A, like, what are the priorities for the village in terms of next steps for sustainability? Um, and what should we be looking at and, um. Out of that, they can come back with some type of a proposal for us as well, and we can certainly look at other companies too. But I think, I think actually that's just good to have an hour to sit down and kind of go through. You know, where, where are we going? What does this look like for us to implement sustainable? Things in our village, we have been adopted the Climate Smart Community Program. And we know that there's certain parameters to that. Um, Steve can weigh in on that at some point. Um, you know, not tonight, but I just think, um, if we could set up just even an hour discussion at some point. Um, over the summer, uh, just as a Q and A, I think that would be helpful. What does the board think?
I think they've set up a, a meeting specifically for this purpose, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to kind of shape, shape up where we're going with our sustainability efforts and projects and what would be a priority. You know, um, and sort of just kind of get, kind of get things in order, I think for us would be good. And Siemens certainly can, um, bid on that, they, you know, they work with many, many municipalities all over. Um, and I think he did share that information. So I think, you know, it's an opportunity for them to circle back and say, this is what we could do to work with our village, you know, we are. We're small and, for example, um, and maybe Steve could speak to this, you know, we're, we know we need to. Upgrade our furnace, our heating system here at Village Hall. And, um, that's pretty complicated if we want to do something like a geothermal, uh, maybe heat pump. Um, Steve, are you still on? I guess he is, I think that's him under admin. Um, you know, uh, so I think there's, there's a lot of moving parts to this stuff. I've never done geothermal and I think it would be good to, um, seek a partner. In that, and whether it's Siemens or someone else, but I also think it's good to initiate this discussion and get our priorities lined up.
Okay.
Yep. So I'm just thinking, you know, some point we can set this up, we can pull the board, you know. Um, you know, maybe it doesn't happen till September, but I'm just saying, you know, at this point, I think it's just good, we. We need to move forward on something with our HVAC system, I know Dorothea can speak to that, it's kind of chugging along here. Um, okay, so, uh, next up, um, we'll, we'll, we'll get back with the board, just like we'll come up with some kind of a time, just about an hour or so. Um, next up is the Heat Smart, Pittsburgh is the draft, um, for the Community Outreach Coordinator. Um, we have to put in our own scoping document. Um, we couldn't tie it in with the town, they just had already gone on with, and did theirs. But we are still working jointly with them and you can see that in the document. You know, that, um, the community outreach segments we're all doing together. And what's nice is the town has offered to, you know, do the promotion and we certainly can put it out on our website and Facebook page and all the things. Um, that we use as well. Um, and, um, you'd also see in the document, you know, Justin brought this to the board and so he can be our liaison. To the public for this project and I think it's a great idea. Yeah, Renee?
Does he, does he know that he's, okay, you've already spoken with him, okay. I didn't want to make a motion since he's not here.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was a little weird because what had happened, his name was put actually on the town document.
Okay.
And that's their scoping document, so. You know, now, you know, we just each have to submit our own separate scoping documents, so that's, that's what we're doing tonight. So I would entertain a motion to adopt this document and move forward with the collaborative program with the town. Okay, we have a second roll call, please?
Trustee Stetser?
Aye.
Trustee Lamfair?
Aye.
Trustee Keating?
Aye.
Mayor Plummer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Did we, did Mayor Plummer make the motion and Dan seconded? Or did you say, do I have a motion? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I, I heard it wrong, okay, great.
Um, okay, so next up, I'm speeding on Bouton Avenue. Um, a, a resident, um, came into Village Hall and, um, was really concerned. As, I think particularly because of the whole project where, you know, uh, the bridge is closed and traffic is now sort of rerouting and taking different. Smaller arterial streets, uh, Bouton has really, and Lily, you may be able to speak to this too, because you're off of Bouton. You know, much more traffic, um, they felt that the speed was, um, far, you know, far more increased. And they felt that the speed bumps really were not working that effectively, that they were almost too low. Um, and maybe Zach, you can speak to that, I mean, I'm, I'm just bringing this up because this is a concern. It's escalated clearly since this project has started on the bridge. Any, I mean, any thoughts on that? Anybody? Lily, do you have any thoughts on speeding on Bouton?
I just muted myself. I think it's been ongoing and anytime there's any construction or disruption in the traffic flow, you, oh, it, it's, you know. There's a certain amount of burden sharing that has to occur, uh, it's unavoidable. Um, but certainly the speeding, I think the cars parking on Bouton has, has been helpful.
Yeah.
I've noticed because it's sort of acts as a chicane, um, and a traffic calming. But certainly the people who are directly on Bouton are, are gonna have much clearer anecdotal, um, information. And if, if their perception is that they're speeding, you know, absolutely, it should be addressed, but I don't know. In, in which power we could, how we can do any more than we have done. A stop sign has been placed, we have added parking spaces on both sides of the street. And we do have speed, speed humps. I don't, I think that there is a, and Zach can speak to this, a, 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 a limit to how. High you can have those because of emergency services coming through. So I don't know that they could, we could make them any.
Yeah.
More obtrusive than they are currently.
I'm bringing it up because the resident was really concerned, so. Yeah, Zach, maybe you want to speak to that, I know that you're probably right, Lily, there's a certain.
Yeah, I believe all the times that we've set up a speed century, um, on Bouton. Um, it's always shown that the average speed is way lower than the speed limit on the road. Um, this, like Lily was saying with the speed, uh, stop sign there. Um, a, a lot of the times it seems, um, that it's the car, you know, vehicles as they're speeding up, they slow down to go over the speed bumps. Speed up and then stop at the stop sign and speed up again. Uh, there isn't really a lot of opportunity to gain a whole lot of speed. Um, and that's just what the speed centuries have told us in the past. Um, and yeah, again, following Lily, there's only so much we can do on that road for, for traffic calming. Um, when I drive down through there. I would say that the alternating parking really has an effect. Um, this, the, i- if we go with a speed hump that's any taller. Um, we'll start getting more complaints about the noise of vehicles driving over them. And that's happened in the past and I think that's why we went with a lower profile speed hump on that road. Um, because we used to have a steeper speed hump similar to what's on Rand. Um, on Bouton, but those replaced with, uh, the lower profile. So, kind of a, uh, lose-lose situation, um, what we do, it seems there.
And, uh.
Yeah, Dan?
I'm sorry, Renee, did you have your hand up before me, I just put it up?
Um, I did, but I don't, I was just gonna, um, say that we can, you know, see if Captain Alberti can put a detail there. Just when, the next time they go around, uh, we have been seeing that the, the speeds are lower, he has been reporting that. Speeds are lower than the speed limits, they, you know, they're, uh, not seeing. Um, excessive speeding on the neighborhood streets, we do know that people are driving crazy because they're frustrated and mad. That the bridge is shut down, so people are definitely more aggressive right now, drivers, I mean, pedestrians are not aggressive. But, um, drivers are very impatient and, and aggressive right now.
Okay, yeah, thanks for that, yes, Dan?
Yeah, so Renee, I was gonna say exactly that, the only thing I do want to add to it, um, with Captain Alberti. Is I did get a call from somebody at, um, what's the last street on North, um, North Main, is it? Heading out to the Pickle Factory, um.
Line?
Line, uh, th- they said, um, the speeding is really bad there right now, so if you could just.
Oh, interesting, okay.
Because of the clothes, I don't, I don't know, she was saying that she thinks it's, it has been noticeable since the close of the, of the road.
Right at line and, and North Main or using their street as a, as a cut through?
Oh, no, right at line in North Main.
Line in North Main, okay, great, thank you, so line in North Main. Um, I do appreciate having the data to, um, Zach, I think that's really important and helpful. Um, because, you know, we proceed with just having the data from the, the speed century is, is helpful. I'm repeating myself.
No, that's all right. We can put one of the speed centuries on Bouton just to, you know, see if that has any effect. But it'd be coming off of, uh, either South or Jefferson.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're.
But we showed that Captain Alberti know, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I'll give him enough on both of those locations, yeah.
That's something, interestingly, I've noticed on South Street. Um, even though we have twenty mile an hour speed limit and the speed century. Consistently, people are going well over thirty-five on that street consistently, because I travel at it all the time, so I. That clearly, yeah, they don't pay any attention to it, fortunately.
So frustrating.
Always a tricky call, because you don't know if, um, if, uh, if it was thirty or forty, would they be going forty or fifty? So we just don't know.
I think the new ones, don't the new ones, Zach, give us more specificity than just the ten mile range?
Yeah, they do.
Hey, Zach, a year or so ago, you sent over some of that data, will you send it over again and I'll play around with it and we'll see what it tells us?
I'll see if I still have that data or you can wait for me to extract some of the data.
Well, just, uh, what I mean is some new data.
Like just the next, the next cache of data?
Yeah, I've got some old stuff, just send over, just dump it into Excel and send it over to me and I'll put, make something useful out of it.
And to Lily's point, I mean, one of the challenges with, with South is that, is we know design has the biggest impact on how fast drivers will go. So, uh, you know, we are gonna be trying to make some changes to South, um, hopefully in the future, um, very soon. But, um, we've done what we can, we could work with the fog lines, we can do, do some other stuff, I mean, there's a curb in that road. It's just, it, it's so frustrating, but, um, lowering the speed limit, it's a good, good thing to do, but it's not the. It's not a silver bullet, so we need to make some design changes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
One of many, yes, Steve? Oh, and Dorothea, you had your hand up, did you?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Steve, okay.
I just, I wanted to, uh, mirror what, uh, Renee had said there, because I've noticed with the bridge closing there. People are a lot more aggressive right now, they're, you know, as far as the driving in the villages. The attitude of people is a lot stiffer right now because of the frustration of getting in and out of. Of Shane Place and with the, the street closed, so I just want to say that, because I'm, I drive daily, you know, I mean, around the village. Or my, and I, what Zach said too, the open parking, I believe Bouton has helped quite a bit, I, I notice I. You know, I have to wait or, you know, you have to wait for somebody, so it tends to slow you down. The fact that you have to wait for somebody coming out of the lane, I think that was a big help on there. But until that bridge opens, I don't, I think you're gonna have an issue. Just with people being a little more aggressive because they're, they're frustrated.
And we told Captain Alberti that at our last meeting, Mayor Plummer and I just met with him last week or whenever it was, and we let him know that there's some, you know. Kind of crazy behavior going on, so hopefully, hopefully it'll die back down.
Well, when the bridge opens, yes, Dorothea?
Yes, we have correspondence related to this. Comment, but the person is also online, had her hand raised, so I'm not sure she wanted to speak or not. So Ms. Cargill, did you want me to read your current correspondence? I can read it if you wanted to raise your hand and speak directly, I can let you do that. She wants to speak directly, thank you. I will forward the correspondence to the board, too, if they have it. Ms. Cargill, you can speak.
Unmute yourself, please. There you go. Thank. Oh, we can't hear you.
Ms. Cargill?
Might be Jack, I'm not sure, Jack or Marilyn.
I can't go by names anymore.
I know. Are you unmuted? I'm wondering why we can't hear them.
They are unmuted.
It's gotta be on their end.
It's been working great all night, so.
So close.
So close.
Should, well, should we read some of the correspondence?
I'll read some of the correspondence.
Sorry, Jack and Marilyn, but we'll, we'll read.
Suddenly they can speak, I'll leave them in an open position. Um, it starts with, first of all, my wife Marilyn and I, thank you for all your valued service to our Pittsburgh Village Community. Um, talks about this item being on the agenda, I'll smash two speed bumps, provide help, but, but do not solve the speeding problem. At this point in time, around a dozen children live on Bouton and, and three connecting side streets. School will be out soon and those children will be out and about, including Bouton Avenue itself. I think none of us want to see first responders there because of more children have been hit by a speeding veh- vehicle. As I've strongly suggested, the speed bumps on Bouton are not effective enough. Ran place extension also has speed bumps in place, those are very different size and width in the Bouton ones. But if you will give more bang for the buck, we have driven over them many times and you don't want to go more than five, ten miles an hour. I took accurate measurements of both speed bumps. Um, let's see here.
Oh, you measured the speed bumps on Bouton and then on.
Yes, he did, yeah, apparently Bouton measures wide by two and a quarter inches high. Ran place by one foot wide by two inches high. The very great difference in width and two feet makes a great mechanical difference as vehicles pass over them at similar speeds. The much more gradual, longer incline of the wider ones greatly reduces the physical shock, bounce and noise sound produced. Even at higher speeds, with the narrow twelve inch bump, all of those effects are much greater, lacking more gradual incline. Therefore, drivers are more encouraged and, and inclined to ignore the wider bump, even exceed the village speed limit on Bouton Avenue. Ran place extension gets very little traffic compared to Bouton Avenue, one late afternoon last week, I counted an average of five to seven vehicles every five minutes. No doubt, closing the main street bridges having the same effect on that for Bouton. Also, the speed bump warning sign for eastbound traffic is only fifteen feet before the bump. Plus thirty feet before the sign, it is obscured by low tree foliage and too high. Suggestions, use the same type of speed bump on Bouton, it, Bouton is ran place or switch them. Put in a temporary speed indicator device for driver's info, ask the county to assign a deputy to monitor speed. And I will send this out, it's more greater detail in the measurements and if I botched anything, I apologize.
Yeah, and make sure Zach gets a copy of that too, you know, because we can maybe revisit that. Now, and tha- thank you, uh, Jack and Marilyn, both of you, yes, Renee?
Um, Zach, you said that there were the taller, those other speed bumps that are on Rand were initially on Bouton. And were they requested by residents to be taken out because of the noise or?
Um, that was before my time and, um, from what I understand. We are getting complaints about the noise that they, they were creating. And so that's when we swapped over to a lower profile one. I also believe that one of the residents was having issues with getting his car over, very, uh, low profile car. Um, so there are a few different factors why we went with lower profile, uh, speed hump. But not that we can't revisit it if everybody's all right with it.
Thanks.
Yeah, yes, Dorothea?
Q and A question from Mr. Pierce. Anyway, ARPA funds can be used to pursue and install permanent speed centuries at the end of State Street.
Eastbound traffic and on the east side of the bridge, State Street, eastbound traffic, as well as the west end of State near Bridge westbound.
We'll put it on the list.
Yeah, put it on the list. Exactly. You'll be polled. Okay, um, so the action I'm coming out of this is just Zach, we're gonna take a look at this. You'll see what um, you know, the letter uh will contact Captain Alberti and let him know. And also for line um and see if we can maybe get some reduction of speed. Yeah, it's, it's a problem everywhere. I mean, it's just so frustrating. Um, okay, next up, um, I am gonna table Pittsburgh Youth Services. We were supposed to have a meeting and I wanted to just be able to report back to the board. They had to cancel it. They had an emergency, so we'll just put it on the next um agenda for our next meeting. Okay, um, the Busy Bee Pollinator Project on this Saturday, just a reminder, and the posts are going out. Um, we're gonna be putting in our pollinator garden behind Village Hall, the Seneca Park Zoo. Folks are gonna be here with our plants. Uh, kids of all ages are welcome. We're gonna have some refreshments and you'll get all kinds of great ideas about I have, about how to create your own pollinator garden in your own yard. So, and the garden behind Village Hall is for everyone. It's for our community. Yes, Steve?
Do you have a small tiller?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have a tiller?
Yes, I have a little John Deere tiller.
Oh, my goodness. Of course you do.
Steve, can you bring it in?
Yeah.
Because, yeah, we're gonna need all the help we can get with getting that um ready for this weekend with the road project being pushed to tomorrow.
Yeah.
Time to get all that um turned so we can have it ready.
Yeah, we're kind of all hands on deck because, you know, the chip seal project came through that they're doing now two weeks earlier. So now, you know, everybody's doing Lincoln and Washington. And so, you know, it just, that would, that would be really helpful.
All right.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Calling all tillers. Um, yeah, and that, that's at ten o'clock on Saturday morning. Um, it should be a lot of fun. And, okay, uh, next item up, update on the state's speed limit legislation. I know Renee, you've been following this and.
Yes.
You updates on this. Yeah.
So our bill, not surprisingly, uh, did not pass again. Um, it passed in the Senate, but not the Assembly. Um, but what did pass was a bill supported by Nikon that allows villages and cities to impose village-wide speed limits as low as twenty-five miles per hour. So we can already do this, of course, um, and we have, we did it, you know, street by street um in our, in our code. Um, but um, this, you know, this is still a step forward because it helps just um change the culture and the mindset. Um, and now cities and villages um will be allowed to do it um if it's signed by the governor. Um, all in one swoop. So you don't, you know, uh, you don't have to, to do it street by street like, like we did. Now, again, this is the same problem with the, the first versions of our, our bill. Um, which didn't cover state-owned roads and this doesn't either. So again, what I said earlier is we can already do what this bill um says we can do and we already have. Um, so the, the tricky part, if you recall, our, the newest version of our bill, which was in this session and the previous one specifically called out um our local street names for those, for those roads, um, for those sections of state-owned roads. And um it didn't pass, of course, so we still cannot lower that below thirty miles per hour. And that's not it within our jurisdiction anyway. Decisions regarding speed limits on state-owned roads um that run through our village and, and cities are set by the regional DOT office. And we know that they, they feel that thirty miles per hour is still the appropriate um, the appropriate uh number for those roads in our conversations with DOT. So.
Doesn't mean we're giving up.
Yeah, no, we're not going to. So um, anyway, I just wanted to give everyone an update. We're gonna keep trying. Senator Brooks, it's, you know, still on board for continuing to, to try in the next session. And I believe um uh Assemblyperson Burns is as well.
Yeah.
So that's the update. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Thanks. But you know what's, what's actually great about this sort of being codified statewide? Um, is that, you know, yes, it does change the culture in our village, but hopefully as soon as, you know, all these municipalities get on board, then the culture just changes completely for when you're entering a municipality like that. You have that expectation that there will be a lower speed limit. We're hopeful. You know, that's a longer term goal, I think, but.
That's why I'm continuing to push for design changes that make people slow down. Speed, speed humps, chicanes, parking, narrowing the lanes, all of these things. Um, continuing to do that will have an impact on, on how fast people drive, more so than anything else.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for following up on that. Uh, next up, the customer survey.
So this was supposed to be, this is supposed to be under member items, but uh, you know, a while ago was uh, we were asked to put that together and um at our last regular meeting, um, I got some feedback from all of you that we don't need separate one. We're looking for just something quick and simple. Just maybe something online when an applicant gets through the whole process, we, we send it to them and they can give us a little bit of feedback. So again, no decisions tonight. There's nothing to, to share. I sent all of you uh the, the latest version of the draft. Um, give me your thoughts on that. Take a look in the next two weeks or so. And then, you know, we can discuss whether we want to have a, a customer survey and if we're on the, if we're hitting the mark here with this one. And Steve, I can send it to you as well. Stephen Zach, I realize um I probably didn't send it to you, but you're probably gonna wanna see it too because it's just generally about the whole process, just so we get a good idea um if we're serving our villagers well as they go through the application process.
Yeah, I'd like to add too. Um, I, I also reached out to my fellow mayors in the county um to see, hey, are you folks doing, you know, a customer service survey? And they all responded immediately, like immediately with, oh, my gosh, if you have a draft, please send it. We want to do it. So I think it kind of, you know, is a good thing. I mean, they said, this is a nice thing to be able to reach out to residents this way. So um it's all good. Good thing. Thanks, Renee, for your work on this too. Really appreciate it. Um, next.
I, I wonder if they were talking instead about the village-wide survey that we did. So maybe send them that.
No, actually, this was specific. I mean, the email that I sent to them was what we were trying to do and just if they had done anything like that. So they were, they were interested in that to get that kind of feedback. So um, okay, next up, um, camera policy. Now, I know that trustee like up was um, this was his item. I don't know if we should table this and bring it back when he is with the board because he couldn't be with us tonight.
I think we should.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's fair, you know, because it's, he has submitted the information. I'd like to have him here for the discussion. Does that make sense? We'll just put it on the next agenda when he, when we know he's, he's back. Okay, so.
Um, but I think one of the big issues was about the audio. We can tell the public that the audio is.
There is no audio.
Yeah.
Okay. Nope.
Yep.
And Dorothea, can you confirm that?
Yeah.
Because you've oh, you're, you're muted. She has no audio.
See, no audio at all. It's all turned off. It's not on. Um, no, I can't hear a thing. And honestly, I only check out of these not to. So if you're gonna do something during, during the day, because I don't check during the day, I only check when I get something at one AM.
You see the Fox family.
It's usually the Fox family, to be honest.
How accessible is the video to you? Is it something you're able to get into pretty easily?
Yes, it's on my cellphone. So I, like I said, I only check out times or when there's a question.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, where are we here? Oh, uh, DPW workshop. Um, Zach and I, we, we spoke, you know, earlier today because we know you guys are absolutely slammed right now. And uh, we thought maybe, and we know everybody's kind of has summer, summer hours and summer family things and vacations, that maybe what we would do is um you folks, the crew, you know, be put together just sort of where you are with some of the big projects and some of the things on the list. And we can distribute that, distribute that to the board and put it on our website and then maybe schedule a workshop a little further further along, maybe, you know, at the end of summer or something when it isn't quite so hectic.
A workshop for what? What?
It was all, it's just all the different projects that were coming down the pipe with DPW. Um, you know, I, there was just, there's so many moving parts, as we know. You know, updates on equipment, all that kind of stuff and just where, where things were going. Um, because DPW covers, covers a lot of areas. And you know, there's so much going on right now, just with all the construction with Nice Dot. They're really, you know, in a race to get some of the chip seals done and um move things forward. It's just a, a, a busy time for our DPW. So if it's okay with the board, if we just push the workshop itself down and maybe what we can do is in the interim, give you all just a general update of um some of the big stuff that's coming along, if that makes sense. Any thoughts? Nodding. Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I think, you know, we all know how hard they work. So I think just to uh, just put it out a little bit further. Okay.
We also know, getting back to that village-wide survey that Dan was talking about, the DPW is the favorite thing in the village. I mean, you too, Dorothea, you're the favorite. And Steve, okay. But we know DPW um was.
Number one?
Yeah.
I would argue a difference if you take out the number that was used against us for people who had no contact with us and it was counted, counted against us. We actually were in the nineties. So I would say we were number one, but we won't go into details.
Okay, showing, all right. Little, little throwdown here. Um, anyway, all good. Everybody's great. So uh, next up, the uh, Main Street lighting. Item thirteen, Main Street lighting.
This was, yeah. Okay, thank you, thank you. It's, it's not really my issue. It was something that I, I brought to the board uh at the request of a resident. And uh, she had taken some photographs and she put them on a thumb drive, which I hope that we will be able to see. And the issue uh is that in the parking lot, uh, the parking lot, yes, you access it from Main Street. So strictly speaking, it is Main Street lighting. Um, on the uh, not the SJ's building, but the um dentist's office behind the SJ's building. And additionally, the um Howard Hannah building, uh, the light is shielded as per code. However, the angle of the light is such that it's shining not on the downward on the parking lot, but across the parking lot and right into the residents' windows who uh live on Lincoln Avenue and their bedroom windows are all along the back of the house. And so the lighting is, you know, you're able to read a book uh in the middle of the night with the light that's coming through the windows. So uh she requested several times to have it um reviewed. And I know that Steve did look at it. And the other um issue she had was the LED lighting of the displays in the Howard Hannah window. And I think, and the board will be able to see this in the photographs, it is because this particular lighting is blue as opposed to the warm, warmer uh lights that exist on the rest of Main Street. So they really, they really show out um because they're, they're very bright, but maybe because not the light level so much, but the fact that they're very blue. So um if, if Dorothea is able to show, share those photographs with the board, I think they're self-explanatory. And now Steve would like to.
Yeah, yeah, I recognize Steve. Yeah. Thanks, thanks Lily and Steve. Yeah.
All right, Lil, a couple of things. The, the woman had contacted me and exclusively up until you came involved, Lily, talked about the lights on the front of the building. And uh, and I addressed it with her. I went down to the light meter and I gauged the light on Main Street of all the businesses along that area and they're all within uh like one percent of each other, none brighter than the others. The, the lights on Howard Hannah are a bluer light, a whiter light, but they're held back. They, I had them move them back from the windows. And he is also going to install a film on the windows to darken them slightly because they have an issue with the thermostat and the AC running continually. They had two floods in the last month because when the sun shines through that front window, for whatever reason, they cannot move the thermostat because of how it's wired. The sun shines on the thermostat, so the AC you run it, AC you, AC unit ran continually and flooded the basement. Um, it froze the condensate line. Um, the, the light that you're looking at right there, um, I have talked to the Realtor who has contacted Mr. Rosenbaum. And they are going to, or should have, I'm hoping they did it today. They, they were going to tilt that down more. There is a shield on it. But for whatever reason, the shield has been pushed back up. So I did contact the Realtor who's had it for sale, who contacted the owner and said they would be addressing that light. There's another light on the back corner of the um, I guess it's the room building. It's not the Howard Hannah building.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that, that has a shield on it. It has a round shield completely encompassing the bulb. Um, so that's legal. The, there's a light, she has a picture of the light on the back of Howard Hannah. It's just a simple door light. I had uh Dan Capra look at them. It's a sixty watt bulb in that light. They can, they're allowed up to a seventy-five watt bulb on the light. It's just a regular door light. Um, I, I mean, I'm doing my best to address the issues. That, the one you're looking at right now is a um down light, straight down with a round shield on it.
Right. That's the one at SJ's and that was no, that wasn't an issue. She was using that as a demonstration to show, look how this is no problem. But look at the one when you go, you pan to the left and see on the dentist's office, how it, it might be shielded, but it's directed towards the, across the parking lot and consequently shining right there, right there. That's how bright that is shining into her, her home, her window.
Steve, you just mentioned that they're taking actions to correct that.
Yeah, so that's, that's the answer. So I think we're good.
Okay, yeah, just so we're making sure we're getting the right lights and all that. Okay.
Do you need me to share any more of these photos?
Yeah, and just, just so you know, don't, none of those lights are new. They've been there for, for years. Um, it just became an issue now to this woman. Um, and I, you know, I immediately addressed as soon as you let me know, Lily, that there was something different than what she initially had referred uh me to.
Okay. Well, thank you. And that, thanks for following up and, you know, keep us posted then. Yeah, and that's the front of Howard Hannah. Okay. And, and those are the ones that are moving back from the windows.
Yep, they put, they pulled them back from the windows. They were actually directly in the window before. They're, they're pulled back a foot and a half now. And they're, they're going to be putting film on those windows to darken them slightly, which will knock the light down of those um displays. And I don't know that it, there's kind of a, a gray area with that. I don't know that we can, we have the right to do anything about interior lighting. We have a, we have a right to do things about lit signs. We have a lot, right to do things about exterior lighting. I don't know that we have a right to define what people can do inside the building.
I think if it affects the exterior of the, on the street, we, we may. Um, that would be something to follow up and really review the code with Jeff.
Well, that's, that's, I checked the spillage on this, onto the top block. And that's what I measured. And it's, and like you said, between uh Howard Hannah breeze and the book culture, they're all within one percent of each other.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, thanks. Lily, any other uh thoughts on this? Are we good?
No, I think it's good. I think that um the concern was that the one, basically that one light that was shining, it was just the direction of the light. That was the main issue. I told her that the Howard Hannah thing was more an aesthetic call and might not be, you know, within, maybe to address because of code, which she totally understood. So I think it's all good.
Okay, thank you. Thanks so much. All right. Um, next up, some member items. Anybody have member items this evening?
I already did mine.
Yeah, I think we already did it. Yes, Dan?
I have a few. Um, let me just grab my notes. The first is the traffic light um at the end of Shane Place and State. And I just want to make sure that we're following up properly. So the history of this is Brooklyn first wrote to um the DOT um somewhere around the fifth or sixth of June. I don't have that original email. They responded, no, on the seventh of June. I sent an email on the ninth of June. Uh, Lisa chimed in and sent another one on the tenth. And they've not responded that I've seen unless they just hit reply to you and didn't reply all. I don't know, Lisa. So we've now had two. So we've now had two communications where we haven't heard back from them. So I'm wondering, does anybody wanna pick up the phone? Does anybody have a relationship with them?
Ken, I'd like to, I'd like to speak to that. Um, I also met with Bill Smith today, and we are joining forces on this.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the town gets complaints, we get complaints, and we're, we're, I'm angry about it. I think we definitely need to have something there. And Zach, we, you and I spoke about this. This happened with uh, when the State Street Bridge closed, and we needed to have. You know, the light at the other end of Shane Place, and there was none. And so we all met down there, we showed them what was going on physically with all the traffic. And I think at that point, didn't a truck hit the corner of the building?
Yep.
Yeah, and it was crazy. And so we did get that temporary light. And so we are scheduling a meeting and, you know, Bill will be there, I'll be there. Um, we could all be there. Well, no, we can't actually. Um, but to to just show them how bad the traffic is and how dangerous it is. It is when people are trying to come out of Shane and make a left, and someone's coming over the bridge. It's just terrible. Um, so Zach's gonna help coordinate that uh, next week. And I was, I was there uh, late this morning around eleven, eleven AM. And uh, traffic was backed up from Shane and State Street Bridge all the way down. Almost, well, actually to the coal tower. And that was just, you know, off hours. Yeah, Stevie, did you have a?
Well, I was gonna say, if you have a meeting, just drive them down through Shane Place and then try to get back.
At at four thirty, somewhere between four thirty and six thirty.
And it's effective. We had to do that for the timing, the pedestrian, the leading interval at the temporary light on the other side. We had to get them out on the street, and they they did and and immediately fixed it. So.
Yes.
I mean, I know that was an easier fix than putting a a light up, but they they knew we were gonna ask for this because we we've asked for it before.
Yeah.
Okay. And and.
Almost fifteen minutes.
Hang on one second. Excuse me one second, Steve. Yeah, Renee, were you finished? Okay, yeah, Steve, or Dan, were you talking? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, um, so, okay, uh, um, and Elise, I do wanna adjust that a little bit. It's well, it's all the way to the end. So I know you've only seen it to the coal tower. When it, when I sent them the pictures of it, it was all the way past that, past via Girasole. Like, it was the whole length of it.
Yeah, I mean, I was just saying, even off hours today, at like eleven in the morning, it was even to the coal tower.
Okay.
Can only imagine when you're there at four thirty, as you say. It's nuts.
Okay, sorry, Steve, go ahead.
Yes.
I made a mistake. Um, last week, at the end of the week, I normally get off and go five ninety mile an hour. I was thinking or something, drove past, got my normal way coming backwards by uh, the pub. I was fifteen minutes late to work. I was, I was at, I was at Shane Place at seven minutes two, ended up being fifteen minutes late.
Yeah, we know there's a problem.
Every day when I'm trying to get to the village office for my shop, it takes me about twenty minutes just to get there.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's a temporary inconvenience, but we do need to address some of these safety issues and the backups, definitely. Yes, Zach?
Can I, can I just clarify one thing? Uh, I am on vacation next week, so next week is not.
Ooh, then you know what? I'll reach out. I'll just reach out directly. We, cause we have to make this happen. Yeah. No, that's a good thing. You're on vacation. Good for you. Okay, Dan, did you have some more items?
Yeah, I've got two more. So the next one is my standard one. Um, when it comes to seventy-five Monroe, I am in favor of direct negotiation, face to face, sitting at a table. And hope that you encourage all of the parties to do the same. I do believe this is solvable, but only with sitting down and doing it. Otherwise, we end up in court. Um, and the last, um, I have a statement that I wanna read. Um, Lily, you made a statement at last, this is two pages of text. Lily, you you made a statement at last week's trustees meeting on June ninth. In it, you accused me of bullying you and screaming at you in a closed-door attorney-client meeting on June eighth. While I have a different account of the behavior of both of us at that meeting. If you felt I was bullying you or screaming at you, I hear you. I respect your feelings and I apologize. I am sorry. I apologize full stop. And that said, I think your public statement about a private meeting was a cheap shot. For three reasons, I think it was a cheap shot. It did not follow an agreed-upon process. There was no public access to follow, to allow the public to decide for themselves. And we had a strong disagreement on possible actions to smooth out an extremely volatile situation. Emotions ran high for many of us, and I am okay with that. I'll take each in turn. From from a process standpoint, you did not give any notice. You were making a statement critical of me. You did not distribute the statement ahead of time. As I learned from Frank Galusha, we are to avoid gotcha moments on this board. They won't be responded to in the moment. Accordingly, I did not take the bait. In my opinion, it was distracting to change the direction of the story from safety to decorum. I'm not the story here. But further, you painted a picture of what happened without any context for the public. The meeting was a private meeting for which there is no recording. It was an attorney-client meeting meant to be private. So people are not able to judge for themselves whether I was over the line, whether I was right, how you were behaving. Whether I did any of the things you said I did. They just have to take your word for it, and I don't think that's appropriate. You've let your opinion and your words fill in people's imaginations where no facts can. Was I heated? Absolutely. Was I bullying you or screaming at you? I don't believe so. I called you out sternly because of the shock of the event. And because I believe you were dismissing the fears of multiple people, seven people by my count. Seven people raised in my mind legitimate fears for safety, and you dismissed them outright. Offering no empathy whatsoever. I stand again in believing that's politics at its worst. And the people of the village want better from their leaders. I told you that in the moment as well. I told you and the team this several times. This is not about politics. Were you or Justin concerned for your safety? You'd find the same kind of ferocity from me. I would vocally and adamantly support you. You seem to value decorum highly, while I value personal safety the highest. At the meeting, I was specific in saying what I think you, Lily, can do to improve the situation for all. To cool things out, and you resisted that simple, costless request. I told you directly that I think your inaction is terrible from a human standpoint, and I stand by that. I'm quite sure I'm not the only one in the room who felt that way. Disagreement is not bullying. A passionate stand is not bullying. And yes, I swore once, so be it. It was not directed at anyone in the room. It was not about anyone in the room. It was emphasis. Changing direction slightly, and then I'll wrap up. Lily, in the last few weeks alone, you voted against raising the LGBTQ plus banner, which you voted for in the last year. You offered no reason for your no vote in public, which sends a clear message to the LGBTQ plus community. That you're not okay with them and that they're, the whole of their government does not stand with them. The next one is a small thing, but it's indicative. Strangely, you voted to move a pile of mulch when our own DPW didn't know how big it was. And told us they didn't have a place to put it, and that it was doing no harm where it is. And finally, last week, you completely dismissed vocally and aggressively the safety concerns of your teammates. This job takes a lot out of a person. You've served a long time. Lily, I have to ask this question. Are you burned out? Is it time to move on to other things? Because these are not the level-headed decisions I've seen out of you in the past. As an aside. Justin's post on social media about this safety issue over the weekend was irresponsible and dismissive of the concerns for safety. Of many people who serve this community. It put those who feel threatened on defense and unable to tell the whole story, a lose-lose for the community. It absolutely should have stayed behind closed doors, which is why it was discussed in an attorney-client session. I find Justin's actions to be irresponsible, to be politics at its worst, and I rebuke those actions wholeheartedly. In closing, I stand behind my words behind closed doors. If you, Lily, felt they were too aggressive and too loud, I respect that and I apologize for that. Fear for safety caused a fight-or-flight intense reaction in me, and I apologize. And I'm quite sure to most, particularly those who know the whole history and are aware of what's going on in the world in twenty twenty-two. It's understandable and called for. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Uh, do we have any other member items tonight? Oh, yes, Lily?
Yeah, I would just like to respond. Oh, I'm only gonna say one thing to that. I never named a name. I never called out a person in a meeting. I never named a name. So I I won't say anything more than that.
We all knew who you were talking about.
Well, maybe, obviously.
You had, oh, hold on a minute. You, we all know who you were talking about. You had all of your people in there. They all know who you were talking about. You invited all your people and for a one agenda item.
No one.
Oh, hold on, for a one agenda item about paving the roads, all your people were in the room. So I I, Lily, whether you said my name or not, it was, it was plainly clear.
Okay, I mean, I, tha- thanks, everybody. I mean, I think, you know, everybody's had a chance to weigh in on this. Um, thank you. Yes, Renee?
Did you? I was just going to to ask that we. Maybe take this offline. I I don't think it's appropriate to be calling each other out in a meeting.
Yeah, everybody's expressed, you know, things, so.
Okay, and and hold on about that, okay? This is, this has been true for four and a half years. People come at me in a meeting. I'm going to defend myself. Lily came at me in a meeting. I defended myself. I never would have said a word about it in public without that. But if you don't want me to respond, don't come at me. I'm not gonna back down from a fight.
You you responded, Dan, that's, I'm saying, let's, can we stop now?
Sure.
Yes, and that's, that's where I'm, I'm at too. I think everybody's, you know, had a say here, so I make, yes, Dorothy, yes. I almost was there, yeah.
I'm sorry, we have public comment.
Uh huh. Oh, yes, of course, sure.
It is my recall to, okay, Art Pierce, it is, if my recall is correct. Another trustee confirmed at the last trustee meeting that all of which trustee Lanfair has stated as to how trustee Kitting had bullied trustee Lanfair. Is accurate, as personally witnessed.
Okay. All right, um, is that it on the comments here?
Yep.
Okay, um, thank you. I make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, uh, roll call.
Trustee Kitting.
He's muted.
Sorry, I couldn't get the button. Hi.
Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Trustee Stetser.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Okay, just real quick, Thursday meeting is canceled. We'll reschedule at another time. And just so the public knows, and I will be putting that notice up.
Yeah.
And will it be virtual or will it be in person?
It would be in person.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Good night.
Thank you, bye.
Bye-bye, everyone.